Is your microphone on?
I'm going to call tonight's meeting to board. Yes, making sure everyone's awake. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Woodard.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
He's been excused.
Where's Rory?
And next is the city manager's comments.
City manager, do you know where Rory is?
No, but I will check in with him just as soon as I'm done with my comments here. Is he online? Okay, good.
Rory's online and accounted for.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, a couple of things to mention to you tonight. First, we have the adopted tree code that council adopted a couple of weeks ago. We have materials available for the public in the lobby to pick up. And we also have information on our website about how that tree code is going to operate and who they can call for help and assistance if they need to. So, wanted to highlight that. We also still have pavilion scholarships available for a certain number of rec programs at our pavilion. Scholarships are available, so we do hope people take advantage of those in order to be able to participate in those recreational activities. It's a great program. You may have also noticed, I know some of you have, but you may have also noticed, or you will notice, trains running along the tracks on the Sound Transit track. They're testing. It's very exciting. Happy to see that. I saw my first one the other day and was just kind of struck by it. It's like, it's actually happening, so that's great. And lastly, I wanted to mention that we were sorry to hear about the passing of Dawn Enox recently. Dawn passed recently. He was a longtime volunteer and a leader for the Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission. He served on the commission for five years and as chair for three. And he supported many of the volunteer and special event activities over the years, even before he joined the board. And he was also at numerous city council meetings and helped recognize the Eagle Scouts. So, we wanted to recognize him and thank him very much for his service to our community. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions, chap?
Are there any questions, comments, online? Go ahead, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city manager, for recognizing Dawn. I guess this is maybe something happens when you grow up, but just wanted to express my condolences to Dawn's family. And wanted to say that, you know, as someone who, you know, getting involved in civic life in Mount Lake Terrace, you know, Dawn was, I think, one of the first. He was really caring and he was also really direct and in a constructive way and really cared for and loved Mount Lake Terrace and all the people in it. So, I learned about his passing last week unexpectedly and really just want to make sure that everybody knows that Dawn, you know, put a lot of time and heart into, you know, making sure our community was a healthy and constructive one. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
I just want to echo what Rory just said about Dawn. Dawn was also a compliance manager at Boeing, so we bonded through that as well. And last time I saw him, it was at the doctor's office. So, I'm just kind of in a state of shock, but thank you for bringing that up. And I think we do need to acknowledge him because he did do a lot for the city. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Okay. I know that was a shock when I heard about it, too. Thanks. Next on our agenda is, you're done with your comments, right? Okay. I don't want to cut you off short. Do I need to read number four?
No, Madam Mayor, that's just a statement that's going to be permanently on your agendas going forward.
Okay, so we can go on to number five?
Yes, under the consent calendar.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
Yeah, and public comment. So, this agenda, and I apologize because we canceled last week's meeting and this is kind of a hybrid between a study session and a regular business meeting, the agenda is a little bit different. Public comment.
We are going to do this, number four. Okay, I was reading the, I was reading the whole thing.
Yeah, no, we can do the public comment, but not necessarily read the statement. Yeah.
Okay, so we can have, if anyone has any public comments that's not on the agenda? If anyone's out there?
No one has signed up for general public comments and no one is pre-registered for general public comments online.
Do we have anyone in the audience or the online audience?
Well, I thought we weren't taking online audience unless they're pre-registered.
For online participation, we would, at this point, require pre-registration if anybody is in the audience. Yeah.
All right. Okay, so now we can go on to number five. And that will be the consent calendar. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar, items A through F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? All in, all in favor? Gosh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All opposed, so that passes, and then we'll go on to public hearing. And vote on amendments on the fire code 15.10, official chapter, Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code 15.10, by the building official, Matthew Geisley?
Gissel, it's okay. Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers, thank you again for the opportunity to serve you. Today's proposal, I will share my screen so we can remind ourselves. So, today's code amendments and changes are for chapter 1510, which is associated with our fire code. We're making the necessary changes to align our municipal code with the state-adopted International Fire Code, which is the 2018. These changes will also be consistent with the 2021 codes when those come in to be adopted, which are currently slated for March. We also made some other minor changes where there was redundancies. If it's already in the International Fire Code, we don't need to duplicate those efforts within our municipal code. And then changed some items that allow decision-making to stay within the city of Mount Lake Terrace, specifically city council through the city manager's office and the CED director for defining who is the fire code official and the jurisdiction having authority in the definitions. Is there any questions that I can help you with?
Does anyone have any questions? I guess I can't see. Oh, there he is. All right. Okay.
Here, I can pull it off the screen if it helps you see better.
Does anyone have any comments? I guess I should open this so I can. So, we're going to, the planning commission forwarded this and... We don't vote on this tonight, do we?
Well, yes, we do. We need to open the public hearing.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
So, public hearing has been moved, opened and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone signed up for this?
No one in person, but we did have one pre-registration from Colleen Roach. And if she is online and would use the hand raise tool, then it's her time to speak. Going once, going twice. She must not be online. There's no one raising their hand to speak.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. And then we move on to, I think I opened the wrong one up.
Oh, yeah. I'll put the motion on the table.
All right. All right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the proposed ordinance and associated amendments to chapter 1510 MTMC to comply with the adopted 2018 International Fire Code.
Second.
Question, discussion.
Are there any questions?
This is just a very minute one. We have to write documents at work and sometimes we have to be so clear that it turns into mud. And so, this is just a simple question. So, if somebody came and read this and they're looking at chapter five and it says the city engineer, do we have to define what city engineer that is?
No, we changed the language because the old position that it pointed to was no longer employed. So, we do have a designated position as the city engineer.
So, there's just like one city engineer?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Mayor Protem?
No. Call for a question.
Okay, we're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve you.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the review amendment to zoning text for private recreational facilities. Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Codes 19.15.190 and 19... Oh, do I need to read all of this? I do need to read all, okay. 19.23.150, 19/130 dot 210, and 19.130 point 230, and 19.125 point 120, and 19.135 point 160. And lastly, 19.30 dot 075. Thank you. With our associate planner, Sarah Pizzo.
All right. Hello, good evening, everyone. So, I will be reviewing the zoning text amendment. Okay, so I'll be going over some background information, the proposal that was submitted to the city. At the SEPA, Department of Commerce, and written public comments, received at Planning Commission, and to date, the comprehensive plan, zoning and land uses, and how that relates to this proposal, the comparisons we looked at when staff did our review, the proposed text amendment, specifically each code that was listed, and then Planning Commission recommendation and next steps. So, some background information on zoning text amendments. This is another way of saying that there's a proposal to change the zoning code. Text amendments are not site-specific or project-specific. They can be changed at any time, as long as the change is consistent with the comprehensive plan and it's a legislative decision that requires Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation to city council. And then city council is also required to hold a public hearing to make a decision. So, the process thus far, we received a zoning text amendment proposal last summer and the Planning Commission held two work sessions. SEPA, a determination of nonsignificance was issued in the fall and we did not receive any comments on the SEPA or the Department of Commerce. And that comment period ended in December. And then the Planning Commission held two public hearings, December 11th and January 8th. And now we're before city council for a work session, January 25th, and proposed public hearing planned for February 1st. So, what is the proposed text amendment that I'll be presenting about? So, the applicant is Forest Crest Athletic Club. They are proposing to allow for privately-owned recreation facilities in our single-household residential zones, given that specific criteria is met and conditional use permits are obtained. Per Planning Commission direction, staff and the applicant worked very closely together to revise the original proposal so that concerns could be addressed to help mitigate negative impacts that could potentially arise from locating private recreation facilities in these zones. And so, a lot of work was done with Planning Commission, staff and the applicant to come to the proposal that's before you tonight. So, the revised proposal includes updates to the following code sections, our definitions, our development standards for uses, recreation and transportation land uses specifically, street frontage and parking lot perimeter landscape, perimeter landscaping on interior lot lines, buffering requirements, location of parking, specific standards for signs. And a new section is proposed that's called Criteria for Private Recreation Facilities: Conditional Use Permits. And this is our zoning map. Just wanting to remind you all of where our single-household residential zones are located and those are the yellow properties within the city. And so, the change would affect all of these properties if adopted. Moving on to the environmental review slash Department of Commerce and public comment. So, as I stated, a determination of nonsignificance was issued in October and no agency or public comments were received on the environmental checklist. Staff sent the proposal to the Department of Commerce for the required 60-day review and no comments were received. Planning Commission received 29 comments for their public hearing and 13 signatures were received, all in favor of the proposed text amendment. They all cited similar reasons, trying to support Forest Crest Athletic Club to be able to make major updates to their facilities because they are currently a non-conforming use and have non-conforming structures. So, in order for them to be able to do what they would like to do on their property, the zoning code needs to change to allow it. So, the public was in support of the text amendment that they had proposed. So, moving on to comprehensive plan, zoning and land uses that relate to this proposal, specifically from the elements of land use, recreation, housing and economic development. So, these are some key themes from those elements that relate. So, diverse and robust recreation opportunities are needed to meet growing demand in Mount Lake Terrace. Partnering with other organizations is one way. We can meet our recreation, parks and open space goals. Urban low residential land uses and RS zones, that's the comprehensive plan designation and the zoning designation for single-household zones, are primarily for single-household land uses. However, the zoning code allows for complementary land uses, though we do not define in our code what complementary uses means. The city is required to provide housing for population growth projections. Business investment and retention is important for economic development and development should be compatible with surrounding land uses. So, staff looked at some comparisons cities to see what their codes allowed for use and criteria related to private recreation facilities. And so, staff looked at Edmonds, Linwood, Shoreline, and then the last column is Mount Lake Terrace, what we currently allow and what's proposed. So, Edmonds and Linwood do not allow recreation facilities of any kind in their single-household zones. So, staff didn't look at required criteria because that didn't exist or doesn't exist since those uses aren't allowed. Shoreline, however, does allow for sports clubs in single-household zones with a conditional use permit. And that is pretty similar to what is being recommended or proposed through this text amendment. So, currently, Mount Lake Terrace allows public recreation facilities in our single-household zones, though none exist, from what I understand. But zoning does allow it. And the text amendment would allow private recreation facilities as a conditional use in our single-household zones. So, then staff looked at the required criteria for sports clubs, which is similar or the same as a private recreation facility, to see kind of what we could glean from that. And Shoreline has general requirements for lighting, parking and signage. It is applicable to all zones. It's pretty general. They don't have set specific criteria for sports clubs, so they rely on their general code requirements. And then the review of the conditional use permit. In Mount Lake Terrace, if this were to pass, general requirements would also apply that relate to parking, landscaping, lighting. But in addition, we would have specific criteria for private recreation facilities that's being proposed. And so, this is a little bit more of a robust way to try to negate any negative impacts that may result from having these land uses adjacent. So, now I'm going to get into the specifics of the proposed text amendment. So, this is the change to the definition for the letter R. Currently, we just have one definition for recreation facilities. But what is proposed is to add a definition for private recreation facilities and distinguish that from public recreation facilities, defining both of these. And that makes sense to kind of set up the rest of the amendment. Development standards, uses, recreation and transportation land uses. So, currently, only public recreation facilities are allowed in our single-household zones and private recreation facilities are not permitted. So, as proposed, we would keep public recreation facilities in RS zones as a permitted use and we would allow private recreation facilities as a conditional use in RS zones. We'd also add the requirement that these facilities would need to be located within 500 feet of a collector, minor arterial or principal arterial right-of-way as designated in our current transportation master plan. Regarding street frontage and parking lot perimeter landscape development, we are proposing adding language that's consistent with what we have currently for public recreation facilities and other uses listed here that have a suggested perimeter planting width on the street frontage and perimeter parking lot landscaping of 10 feet for 100 or less parking stalls and 15 feet for more than 100 parking stalls. So, we just didn't want private recreation facilities to be left out of what we require for public facilities. Perimeter landscaping on interior lot lines. So, this is our landscape buffers on interior lot lines. Currently, we require type 3 landscaping, 10 feet wide on any interior property line for our private recreation facilities, schools, things of that nature. As proposed, we would keep that, but we add a requirement for private recreation facilities to actually have a type 5 landscape strip 10 feet wide when adjacent to our single-household zones and type 3 when adjacent to rec zones. And type 5 is solid screening. So, that's the most kind of buffering you can do with landscaping per our code. And type 3 is a little bit less, but still a visual buffer. So, the idea here is that you have more of a buffer when a private rec facility is adjacent to single-household residences or that zoning and that you have less of a buffer when you're next to a recreation zone because that's more similar in allowed uses. Location for parking. So, we currently have parking facility locations sort of defined in our parking code for single-household, multi-household, religious facilities, hospitals, bed and breakfasts. You can see the list there. What's proposed is that we keep this, but we also add a requirement for private recreation facilities in our single-household zones to locate their parking on the same lot as the buildings or facilities it serves. And we would not allow counting parking on public streets towards the parking requirements. With regard to the wall sign requirements, only a change to the wall sign code is proposed. And currently, the only type of wall signage we allow in our single-household zones is for religious facilities and schools. So, as proposed, we would keep that and we would add a requirement that's consistent with the requirements for schools and religious facilities and add private recreation facilities to have the same requirements. Now, moving on to the new section that's proposed. So, this doesn't exist yet, but we feel will kind of help buffer and minimize any impacts. So, hours of operation. What's proposed is that it's consistent with our nuisance code and how it defines our nighttime hours. And currently, that's from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And so, if our nighttime hours changes, the code will also, or the requirement for private recreation facilities will reflect any change in our definition of nighttime hours per our nuisance code. Similarly, we want to make sure that outdoor recreation facility lighting is turned off during those nighttime hours. Light fixture height maximums are not specifically spelled out as it might differ depending on the type of recreational use. But we list it here to make sure that it's addressed through the conditional use permit review process and not something that's overlooked. We want to make sure that all lights that are provided on-site for parking building, outdoor playfields, things like that, are shielded and arranged to direct light away from adjacent properties. And we already have a code section for this, but we wanted to specifically list it here again so that it's not overlooked and it's something that is thought about in relation to this land use. Fences, we want to make sure comply with our existing fence code. And we're also adding that the first 12 feet in height for fences around recreation facilities be sight obscuring. For example, that could be chain link fencing with slats, mesh or solid wood fencing, again, to help kind of buffer from single-family residences. And then traffic impact analysis would be required each time a private recreation facility is proposed as part of the conditional use permit review. And then a minimum of one off-street loading and unloading space should be provided or shall be provided. And then, on interior and through lots, required side yards can provide off-street parking areas. And on corner lots, the rear yard may be used. We are requiring that the front yard is not used for off-street parking. And all structures should be stepped back 20 feet from property lines. And this is consistent with what we require for religious facilities and, I believe, schools or private lodging and, I can't remember right now. But the... and, I believe, schools or private lodging and I can't remember right now, but the other non-residential uses that we allow in those zones. And then buildings associated with private recreation facilities are not allowed to exceed 35 in height, feet in height. This is pretty consistent with what we currently require for height in our residential zones. And then the minimum lot area that's required to locate a private rec facility in an RS zone is going to be 1.5 acres, and the maximum is three acres. So we want it to be large enough that facilities could be built, but not so large that we have a 20-acre rec facility in the middle of a single household zone, so our neighborhood. And then lastly, our last two. So private recreation facility uses in these zones will have a maximum lot coverage requirement of 45%. This is also right around what we currently require for lot coverage in these zones. An RST zone, it will be consistent with that, which I believe is 60%. And then private recreation facility uses, we're adding an impervious surface requirement maximum of 75% since there tends to be a lot of impervious surface that might come with having recreation facilities. And so we wanted to be mindful of that. So Planning Commission's recommendation on this proposal is to recommend approval based on the following. So private recreation facilities may be a compatible use in our RS zones if the criteria adequately mitigates any adverse impacts to adjacent properties, and the criteria to approve private recreation facilities adequately addresses compatibility with adjacent surrounding residential land uses. So next steps will be coming before you next week, February 1st, for a public hearing. And we're City Council of the opportunity to vote on this proposal. I'm happy to take any questions you might have now. I know that was a lot of information, per usual.
So do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Salmor?
And thank you for the presentation. It's hard to think about it all when I have other questions ruminating in my head. There used to be a pool there, and I saw that Shoreline has two private pools in recreational neighborhoods. So what I'm getting at, can you paint me a different type of picture? And I think it's okay to ask and say no if you can't answer it, but those buildings right now, that's where I learned how to play tennis there years ago, so I was semi-familiar with what was there years ago. And so over the years, it sounds like the buildings need to be redone. And so in order to be redone, we have to make sure that the code is right in that area so they can be rebuilt in that neighborhood so it fits in according to the codes. And you can stop and say shush at any time. But what I'm getting at is, did it fall out of zoning at a certain time or when like the buildings went bad or needed to be repaired? Because I'm trying to understand, there was already something there, and we're just looking at the zoning to make sure that it can stay there. I'm trying to keep up. So if you could just kind of like paint me that picture, because I can go into the other ones and look at it verbatim, but I'm just trying to paint myself a picture of what's going on on that property right now, since I haven't been in there in years. And one of our former council people used to keep us up to date on some of that many years ago. And so I'm just trying to understand what's going on on that property right now. And I know it sounds like the neighbors were okay with it, but could you kind of paint a little bit different?
Yeah. So our code for non-conformances does allow for kind of life safety updates, smaller maintenance to keep the building up and running. So there is allowances for that. But the types of improvements and upgrades that Forest Crest Athletic Club would like to do exceeds the threshold that we would allow for them to just do because our zoning currently does not allow for private recreation facilities in RS zones. And so that's why kind of we're before you with this proposal. And the property was built, or the facilities were built perhaps before it was zoned RS. I'd have to get back to you on the exact timeline. I think I have done that research, and I can include it as an attachment for the next meeting. But when it was built at the time, it did meet all of the codes. And then over time, the codes change, or the zoning designation changes, and then it's out of compliance. And so we do allow for that general maintenance so that they can keep the building up. But anytime a major renovation is proposed, we require that they conform with the existing code requirements. And since they don't conform, they had come to the city to see if the zoning code could be changed so that they can do the project that they would like to do.
That's exactly what I wanted to know, just to kind of build my... So can you tell me what are they doing on the property right now, and what do they want to build there that's changing so much? Because I know we do that with houses. They have to come back if the zoning changes and things like that. So it's kind of the same thing. Are they going to change enough where it's going to bring in mass amount of parking? And I know it said that all the parking had to stay on their lots, but is it, is it that huge a difference? I didn't see a whole lot.
No, they want to, I believe, rebuild their clubhouse and just upgrade the locker room facilities, I believe. And they're here too, if they want to chime in. But it's not an expansion of square footage per se, or the lot expanding. They'd be able to do everything they want to do on their lot. And I believe with their existing parking, but that would be further reviewed. Because staff wasn't reviewing their proposal. Staff was reviewing the text amendment. So, you know, I have heard through our meetings, you know, a general sense, but I don't know the exact...
No, that's okay. That's why I wanted to make sure I wasn't crossing that line of asking things that, you know, probably didn't entail into here. So what you said was just perfect, and I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Sarah. Appreciate the presentation and appreciate the really thoroughness of the presentation and all of the backwork that was done, you know, both with the folks that brought forward the proposal as well as the Planning Commission. It makes it really easy, or easier at least, to make these sorts of decisions when we have a really thoughtful analysis before us. And this is definitely that. So thank you for that. I did have, so I did have a question. I guess I'm curious. It would be helpful for me to understand the potential scope of the decision change that we have before us. So I guess I'm curious, when we think about properties between, not when we think, when we review properties that are between 1.5 and three acres and are within that 500 feet of kind of designated pathways, have we looked at how many properties are potentially within that definition here in Mount Lake Terrace?
Yes. And I can include that map in next week's presentation, but there are four properties that currently meet those requirements. However, one or two have critical areas, which are environmentally sensitive areas. So it'd be very difficult to get approval to build a large recreation facilities on those properties. So that means maybe two properties are feasible, given current lot sizes and all the requirements proposed.
Okay. Super helpful. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you wouldn't mind attaching those, I think I would love to take a look, but that is helpful to understand the general scope. So appreciate that work upfront and the answer. And then just also, we'll name that I appreciate that the traffic impact study is part of the conditional use process. And we'll just name, I think that's an important piece and an important kind of feedback I'm sure we will get from, if there are projects here, whether it is this one or others. You know, I think that is probably a point of, you know, feedback that we will get from folks. So I think that I appreciate that you thought of that upfront and that we looked at ways to mitigate impact and make sure that we understood these decisions as they go through the process. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? You have to wave higher.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. I'd like to commend the Forest Crest Athletic Club for going through the whole process. It's been about five and a half months. And it's, when I moved to Mount Lake Terrace around 1985, this club's been there. They've also been generous to help. At least, I know one event was when Cheeseburger Babies had a nonprofit. They had a festivity. They let us come in and use their facilities. I think it's an asset to our city. It's nice to see athletics continuing on, especially, I know it's a club and you have to belong to it, but this year, it's kind of sad that our MTYAA baseball did not have any league because we didn't have any volunteers. So I do like having an asset like this in the community and commend them to go through this process and to help improve the facilities in our city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Sarah, for the very thorough work here. You know, I think I'm compelled by the presentation. And, you know, I'm also mindful of, or personally feel some reticence to sort of allow for, you know, spot amendments to code or to sort of modify, you know, the sort of overall zoning code for, you know, certain uses where, you know, where we might not allow for others. I think, you know, as, I think I've heard this Planning Commission conversation go, there is a broader conversation that at least comes to mind for me in terms of looking at, you know, why we have single-family zones and why things are and aren't allowed there. And so I think, at the end of the day, I'm supportive of, you know, the proposal that you and the Planning Commission have arrived at. And I think we also need to talk about why, say, this, you know, longstanding, you know, well-loved, private, you know, tennis institution is allowed in this neighborhood, and why we don't have the other things that I hear about from folks around town, like, you know, why doesn't my single-family neighborhood have a, you know, neighborhood bodega that I can find food at, or why are certain things allowed in town center and not other places? So I think, you know, on the whole, I'm supportive of this, and I'm also interested in, you know, there are larger planning, or excuse me, comp plan conversation as we move forward. But I think you've really struck a strong balance in terms of setting some standards and also honoring sort of the importance of this business in town and the services it provides. Because I know that it's hard to find tennis lessons anywhere in the region. And this, you know, is a local asset and an affordable and approachable one at that. So just want to thank you and also sort of doggy ear this conversation for sort of, you know, other things we'll be discussing in the next year ahead. So thanks for the work, and I'll stop here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I just know that for about 20 years, this facility has been wanting to change, to improve and all of that. And we've gone through ins and outs of whether or not we're going to allow it or not and so forth. But it's been there for so long, and it's just part of this city. And I just don't see why, you know, we should change that. So I know that at one point, I probably would not have, you know, wanted that to stay there because of single-family zoning. But, you know, things have changed. And we need facilities like this. And I think the only other one close by is in Everett, South Everett. And as long as you put pickleball courts in there, too. All right. So anyways, that's all I have to say. So we have our, we have the public hearing next week, and we're going to vote on it next week. So I guess that is it. I don't think anyone else is going to add to it. All right.
Thank you.
No. All right. Thank you. Okay. So next is the review contract for the Main Street Design with our Public Works Director, Jesse Hoffman.
Our city engineer, Rich Meredith, will be making the presentation, and all assist
This one? No.
Is that it?
No. I'm technically challenged. This one. There we are. All right. Good evening, everybody.
You're not displaying on the screen.
I know. Where's the, I'm almost there.
The gentleman's in.
Oh, no way. Okay. There we go. Sure. We're there. I knew it. Oh, that one too. This is getting more complicated. I'm Rich Meredith. I'm our city engineer. I'm here to talk about Main Street. I know everybody's excited because it's been a while. Let's see. So for the last year, since I started working here, we've kind of been trying to get Main Street back on, back on track. And so I think we're finally at a point where we are ready to hit the ground running. So tonight, we're here to present the design contract and see if we can start getting some more work done on this. So just to do an overview, here's a vicinity map of the area. Down the bottom of the screen, there's kind of a blue hatched line down there. That was Main Street Phase One. The Main Street project itself was part of our vision for Town Center. And the plan and the vision was to start off by rebuilding 236th Street and 56th, and then some of the connectors on 232nd and 234th. Given the enormity of that, there was a decision made after design started to break it into phases. So Phase One was 236th, which was completed in 2020. And then Phase Two was 56th and the two connectors over to 58. That work unfortunately was affected during COVID, and it basically stalled in 2022. So the consultant team that had been working on it since 2013, we worked with them over the past year, but we weren't able to quite reach an agreement on a new contract. So we decided, let's advertise, maybe we can get some new ideas, a fresh vision, a fresh look at it. And so we advertised, we had four really good proposals from different firms, and we ultimately selected the petite firm, the petite team. ultimately selected the Pertite firm, the Pertite team, because they showed the most promise and had the best plan to meet our timeline. I think, yeah, so Main Street started in 2013 and the different phases, I covered all this. Let's go here. So here's what we're doing. We're resuming the design and the right-of-way activities. Where we, where the project left off at the end of last year, we were at about 60% to 90% of the design, but there had been lots of decisions back and forth that reduced the scope and added to the scope. When the Raze Grant Opportunities came available to us, we realized that adding some scope to the project actually made us more competitive. So that's when we started looking at not only expanding the scope that they had been designing to, but we also wanted to capture the pre-design work for 57th. 57th, I'm going to go back to my picture, 57th is done in the Magenta. And this, there's no road there today. And the question has come up many times from developers is that we would love to develop out here, but we want to know what the boundaries are. And since the last update to Town Center Code and the public engagement was in the 2016, 2017 timeframe, we thought that this would be a great time to, one, update the community outreach and develop some concepts that fit the vision and fit what the current community people are looking for. And we'll be able to, with this contract, get to about a 10% level of design, which will help us be more competitive for future construction grants. So we see this contract as kind of accomplishing two missions. One is to get the Phase Two of the project ready for construction. And then the Phase Three, getting that preliminary engineering is going to position us better for the future. Let's see. So the construction schedule, some of the things that are going to affect our construction schedule, right-of-way is number one. The right-of-way process was began and then it stopped at the end of 2022. You know, part of the reason was, since we were looking at some revisions to the design, it didn't make sense to keep pushing forward with right-of-way acquisition if it might change. So we're hoping that with our new emphasis on trying to get the design done and trying to find some efficiencies, maybe not impact as many people as much, we'll be able to come up with a more, a more efficient right-of-way plan. The Pertite team, one of the things that we liked about them is they actually were able to add a few of the right-of-way folks from the previous team. So they're already up to speed. You know, we can build on the work that was already done. That wasn't, that didn't go away. And their approach was to kind of overload the right-of-way process with as many bodies as they could to get it done quick and fast, and then we could spend the rest of the year with the negotiations. So a lot of the work that we've already done, yeah, thankfully, can be built on. And then with the additions that we're throwing into the design to make it more complete is going to help us a lot. For funding, that's the other thing that affects our construction schedule. Our schedule is based on successfully getting a Raze Grant. The Raze Grant is going to be the big chunk of our construction phasing. Last year, we had a really good application, just didn't, had some technical difficulties at the end and we didn't, we weren't successful in the end. But we learned a lot from that and we've got a much more robust application for this year, even on top of what we did last year. And thanks to Jesse here, we've, we're on track to get this turned in, hopefully in the next two weeks, well ahead of the deadline. So. And then we've been working with our lobbyists and getting some congressional support. A lot of thanks to Carolyn and Jeff for that and Jesse. So, you know, between all these different sources here and some of the other ones I didn't mention, we're hoping, but we're going to cross our fingers for the Raze Grant, but we're hoping to get enough construction funds so that we can go to construction next year. The Pertite, the plan for the Pertite folks should get us the right-of-way certification. If not by the end of the year, then by first quarter next year. There's one TIB grant that, you know, that we're on shaky ground with. And if we can show them that we actually obtained the funding and we're ready to go to construction, then that should not be a problem. That's what they tell me. So, let's see, this is our funding for Phase Two and Phase Three. So for, for the expenses, right now, the approved budget in the, the approved budget is 3.1 million. And the contract that we're bringing for, in front of you today is, yeah, it's, it's not quite this number, it's 2,883,000. So we're within $100. So we're actually have a contract that's under our approved budget. So that's a plus. Some of the revenues that are going to support that are coming from the street fund and some from REIT. Here's some of the totals overall. We looked at the preliminary design cost for Phase One and Phase Two. Some of those were blended in there before it got broken to phases. But basically, the last couple of supplements to the previous consultant's contract added up to 774. This contract will add in another 2.8 million. With our right-of-way cost and our estimated construction cost, we have a total project now at about 43 million. One item of note there is when you're looking at what's a reasonable design cost for a project, it's usually the state average, Washington state average is about 15%. With these numbers right here, we're looking at about 10%. So we're still in the ballpark. We have a little bit of room and I think we're on track. We're where we want to be. So here's some final comments. The development of Town Center is one of our main city goals. So, you know, we're approaching this as here's what we can do to start to make that goal realistic. Completing the Phase Two design will have us in a great position to use the Raze Grant forms, funds when we get them, because we're going to, we're going to get it this time. Developing the Phase Three concept, again, with 10% design helps reduce that uncertainty for the developers and hopefully it can help spur some more development. We know that there's going to be more pressure to get something done there once we hit revenue service with sound transit. So we want to, we want to be driving the bus instead of letting them do it. That's a sound transit joke. But the total design fee, 14%, actually, that's, we figured that out to be 10% now. So we're doing better there. And then a final parting thought is our approval of the design contract with Pertite, that's going to give us our vibrant Town Center, at least one more step towards it. So with that, that's my presentation and we're ready for discussion and questions.
All right. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks, Rich. Well, I'm excited about the expansion here, think, or especially the 57th alignment, the, you know, the most frequent question, I think, with Town Center, or one of the most frequent questions I've gotten with sort of Town Center progress over the years is sort of from residents and, you know, landowners along this alignment. So I'm really glad we're going to get some more sort of meat on the bones of what this will be and give everyone involved, you know, a lot more certainty. I guess I, I'm curious a little bit more about the sort of Raze Grant and other grant prospects. You know, I think, but I'll just share a bit of a personal story here. I think many, for some on council know that, you know, I was privileged in being able to help support the Phase One project, get state funding. And if I recall correctly, you know, the overall Phase One and Phase Two back in like 2013 or 2014 was like $5 million or $6 million, something like that. So that shocked at how far we've come in, you know, project costs since then, but I heard you say a little, I think you were speaking about getting closer to construction readiness. So I'm wondering, but I also heard you say that, that we're, that by the end of X, or by the end of the year, we'd be ready to go to construction. So wanted to ask you to clarify that and I guess I'll stop there because I'm excited about this, as you can tell, but want to make sure we're getting the good word out there for all concerned.
That's a great question. So the design work can go fairly quickly. It's the right-of-way work that's going to take some time. You know, it, right-of-way process is very deliberate and prescriptive. In the end, we're going to need a certification from WashDOT. So there's a very strict path that we have to follow to make sure that we're doing everything correctly for our funding. We're trying to treat this project as it's, like it's federally funded, because if we get the Raze Grant, it will be. So we want to make sure that we're not going to be hamstringing ourselves with some costs that we can't get reimbursed for. That being said, right-of-way process normally takes 12 to 16 months. That's kind of typical. Our hope and working with the Pertite team, they've kind of reassured us that we've already got some progress that's been made and so we're building on that. And so that's why we're more optimistic that we can hopefully get this done by the end of the year. But even if we don't get it done by the end of the year and it rolls into the first quarter, I think we're still okay for our TIB grant, the $5 million TIB grant that's part of the construction package.
Thank you. So it's fair to say that, you know, that this is getting ready for construction and if by, say, the end of the year or Q1 '25, we do get money, then we could go out for construction at that point.
If we are awarded the Raze Grant, we'll know by the end of June, we'll, it'll take about six months before we can obligate the funds. That's what they tell me. So that puts us right about the beginning of next year. And we want to be ready to go out to advertise and be ready to get construction started next year if we're successful.
Great. Well, thanks for answering my redundant questions, but I just wanted to make that clear for everyone. Thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Marie.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rich and Jesse and the entire team for all of the work, kind of re-grounding and getting this project ready to go and excited about it and our community's excited about it. We were at an event last week with other council members from across the county and one of them was sharing that they had just come to Mount Lake Terrace for the first time in a little while and how impressed they were by Main Street and Vanrye Boulevard and the development through there. And so it's exciting to hear all of that positive feedback from other folks engaged in that work in other communities and excited to see this move forward here as well, hopefully. I did, I guess, a question just that I feel like I may get asked at some point and I want to make sure that I understand. So as we're looking at the proposed map that includes Phase One, Two, and Three, can we talk about 235th Street and why that is not part of the plan?
235th, that's a great question, too. And we'll, the, I didn't show it necessarily with this rough graphic, but we will wrap around and maybe do the first 100 feet. Mostly, 234th is a choice because that connects us with the Veterans Park Trail and it connects us with the senior home on the corner there. So there was, there were some generators out there that would stimulate a lot of use on 234th. It was a good connector. 235th is a little bit lower volume of a street and it isn't connecting anything. It would be an excellent road that would be a future phase, or maybe that's something that we could have a concept, that we would develop a concept and then that would be built through development. But there's higher traffic on 234th and on 230th and, or 232nd. And so that's why we decided those were more of a priority than 235th.
Thank you. And maybe just, I guess I'm going to, a follow-up question there that maybe is for you, maybe is not a fair question for you. But so, I mean, I guess, speaking of development, because I think we anticipate that there's the potential for development of some of those properties sooner rather than later. If those were developed, there is already standards in place that match the Town Center standards that we are planning for as part of Phase Two and Phase Three. I guess I want to make sure that we're, whether it is, I guess, is the, are the standards there in a way that at some point it will get done, whether it is by us or through redevelopment by the private sector, or is that something that needs to be addressed?
The standards are there.
The standards are there.
Standards are there.
Okay, thank you. That's.
There's a couple of inconsistencies that we're hoping to address with the Engineering Development Manual. We'll have a street network, a street matrix that kind of defines curb, curb widths and amenity zones and sidewalks. But that's going to follow the Town Center Code, because we want the Town Center area to have the same look and feel. That's, there was a lot of time and effort spent developing those codes and 35th will be following that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I don't know if we have a link to it, but it's the Town Center standards that Brian and I think worked on it when we were on the Planning Commission. And to have Councilmember Payne Donovan remind us what the original cost was, when, if we could have done this 10 years ago when we put everything together, it was $10 million.
Yeah, I found some of the old estimates. That's right. Now, part of the reason this is more.
Yes.
Part of the reason is because the scope has expanded a little bit here. You know, it's, especially with the pre-design work on 57th. But, you know, I'd say some of the construction costs have almost doubled in some areas.
Oh, yes. But now we're getting it done, so.
Yes.
No one's complaining. All right, anyone else? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Jesse.
I just wanted to acknowledge how much work this has been and Rich has pretty much single-handedly done all of the design and negotiations with the firms. So doing the budgeting is easy and he's done the lion's share of the work. So just wanted to acknowledge that hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is a team sport. By one. No, no. I couldn't, I cannot do it without the team. So. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Wow, we thought this was going to be a long meeting tonight. And so Councilmember Ryan was right. He said it was not going to be long.
As long as, every time we think it's going to be a long meeting, it's short. Every time we think it's going to be short, it's forever.
Next one's going to take hours.
Okay. Well, we haven't gotten to council comments. Next is the review of the February 1st agenda, and I don't know if I saw that on there. Oh, it was on this. I was going to the site. Oops. Oh, okay, no. Now, okay. All right, so we're going to do the Black History Month and the Lunar New Year and... Okay, it looks like it's a short meeting.
It looks like it's going to take.
Right. Where's your gavel?
One more time.
Okay, so next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Okay, then we'll... Okay, then we'll move to adjournment. We are adjourned and it's only 8:11.
I'm all good with that second.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Night, all.
Night.